Thank you. I will call to order a meeting of the City of Wilsonville City Council on December 4th at 5:28 PM for our work session. And we will start with a review of the agenda and items on consent. And I would like to take this opportunity to note that I would like to pull something from the agenda. The continuing business item on resolution 3091. I'd like to ask one of the councilors to make a motion to table that until the next meeting because there's more clarification and detail that I would, I think we'd like to have. It would be useful before we vote on it and we have, I'd like to take a couple of weeks. That's my, that's my request if somebody.
So, so you'll.
In the regular session.
Yeah, when, when it comes time to do the agenda approval, then somebody can make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment, with the modification of tabling that.
Which one were you?
Yeah.
That is continuing business.
Oh, yeah.
Resolution number 3091. And so anyone else have anything about the agenda they'd like to comment on?
Yeah.
We're okay with the gen, items on consent, okay? And any councillor concerns?
Any questions on consent? I do have a couple of staff people that are here if there's any questions about some consent items. If not.
So if we, if we do want to discuss any of those, this would be the time to do it?
If you have any questions about anything on consent, we do have staff in the room to address any. If not, they can go home.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you, okay. All right, so that brings us to councillor concerns. Does anyone have any concerns to bring up at this point? Okay. Now we will go to our pre-council work session item about the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study.
Oh, that's telling me there's an error. The one, the one time I didn't come and test my file ahead of time. Not in the folder.
Do you have the thumb drive?
I can in short order.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead. I'll go copy it for you.
Well, do we want to move up to next agenda item?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that brings us to the Beckman Road Corridor project and then we will come back to the Town Center item. Thank you.
All right, good evening Mayor Fitzgerald and council. My name is Zach Weigl, I'm the Wilsonville City Engineer. With me is Andrew Barrett, he's pulling up our presentation for you tonight. And he's the Capital Projects Engineering Manager and Project Manager for the Beckman Road Corridor project. So tonight we have a, an agenda item on the regular session approval of resolution number 300, 3022 to execute a guaranteed maximum price. Number three for the Beckman Road Corridor project. So we're, we're pretty excited. We've been working a lot, a long time on this project and this is a pretty major milestone in the project. So Andrew's going to talk about a little brief history about the project, a little bit of background when he gets the presentation going. And then he'll talk about what, what work of the project has been completed to date and then what's included in GMP3. And then I'll wrap up at the end about the project budget because I'm sure you're aware of construction inflation that's been occurring over the last two to three years and this project has not been immune to that, to that impact. So, so Andrew, if you're ready.
All right, give us one second, we're working on getting this displayed on the screen, I apologize, so.
Something different tonight?
Yeah.
That wasn't your house.
No IT support, that's what's different.
Here we go. Yep, it's rejoining. All right, thanks everyone. Sorry, the share screen button was missing, but we got it back up. So as Zach said, I'm Andrew Barrett, I'm the Capital Engineering Project Manager. I'll briefly touch on a number of items here. First one is the Beckman Corridor project, just some background. We've come to council a number of times, so a lot of this will probably be very familiar, familiar to the council members. But it's a number of combined capital projects that are getting, that are in the same area that essentially will be built as one project to really limit the impacts to the community in the area. And just to be clear, this, you know, there's a list there that shows what the project will entail, which is a roundabout at Canyon Creek, sanitary sewer line, some road widening, a bridge, bridge itself. Couple of things to note, we have come to council before for GMPs one and two, which included a temporary traffic signal and some culverts that that work essentially is complete and has generally gone pretty well. So there are some long-term benefits to this project. It improves safety in a number of aspects. The roundabout, the existing intersection is known to have a high number of collisions. There's also going to be bike facilities, additional sidewalks. There's going to be improvements done on the school frontage to really help improve the use of the whole corridor for, for all users. It's also going to remove the Beckman, the dip itself, the big dip that goes through the creek. That is not, that's not built to current standards. We will be including regional trail link or at least the start of it, kind of the seed, I'd call it. We have an access road that we have to install to maintain some of the facilities on this project that, that will get upgraded in time to the, to the trail that goes down Beckman Creek. And then we'll als, the project will also set us up for repairing corridor restoration work that will be coming in a couple of years and we'll touch on that in a minute. You know, and as I had mentioned, GMP3, there's a number of major components on this particular portion of the work that incorporates everything that's left from what was included in the original idea for the Beckman Corridor project. With the exception of the stream restoration and flow mitigation. You know, just to touch on that, the permitting and getting the offsite site up and engineering done for that, we realized it's going to take much longer than we had originally anticipated. So that work will be happening, it's just going to get pushed out for a couple of years. So, and you see the image there just to kind of describe the, the bridge portion of the work. You know, you would have to imagine if you think of the Beckman dip, the existing road is going to be 30 feet higher than the roadway. But after the flow mitigation work is removed, there's going to be 40 feet of excavation when that stream restoration is done for a total, total drop off the bridge there of 70 feet, which the bridge itself will provide again, a number of users a much better access to the whole area. So, and the bridge, you know, I've said this is going to make the whole area essentially a lot safer, more walkable, more bikeable and safer for the motoring public as well, so.
Could I ask you to just touch on one more thing regarding that that we've heard before? Is that in the current scenario, it might have been with the dip, it might have been fine had we never developed that area because of the short sightline to the signal. This, isn't this one of the early driving factors in this?
Yeah, sure, yeah. So the existing Beckman Road, there's a vertical curve deficiency. So it's a, like you mentioned, a sightline deficiency. So when that intersection at Canyon Creek gets improved for added capacity, that sightline becomes a really big issue because you can't see far enough to stop if there's something in the road.
I just wanted to highlight that as a big thing that we're addressing here, thanks.
Oh, let's see here. So for GMP3, which I just wanted to touch on the community benefits, you know, why we, staff feels like we need to move forward. There are deficiencies for what, how we need to service the community in the area. The Frog Pond needs upgraded service or the Frog Pond area needs upgraded service to their, their sewer system. There's intersection improvements that need to be completed. And I touched on the different modes of transportation. It'll also help complete a number of connectivity issues to the neighborhood in the area. The school is coming in and we need to work on the frontage for them to make sure that we can have a safe route for the users of the school. And one thing I, I just want to make sure I'm clear, I bring up, you know, inflation on this project is a talking point. We've got a couple of slides that Zach will address in a few minutes. But through the whole process, the design process, there were a number of things that we looked at. We call it value engineering to try to see where we can save money for the community and the project and still meet the functional goals of safety, focusing on the community needs. You know, one of those items was to make sure we were right sizing the, the bridge and other components on the project to serve the best. and other components on the project to serve the best interest of the community. So where we are right now, I've kind of mentioned this, GMP1 is a traffic signal that's essentially completed. GMP2 was the Meridian Creek culverts, that's along the corridor and a house demolition in the dip, that's, that work is also completed. Now we're, we're moving forward, getting ready to kick off GMP3, which is the bridge. It's the street modernization, the intersection improvements, and the sewer construction. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Zach.
Thanks, Andrew. So yes, as you can see, you saw in the, in the council packet, the estimated budget that we had available for the GMP, that's, or the GMP3 work was around $23.5 million. The GMP3 contract amount is about $13.4 million higher than that. So there is a gap to fill to move forward with construction. If you want to go to the next slide. So the main factor in that big, in that cost difference is construction inflation, and that's been occurring not just in Wilsonville, not just in the Portland metro area, or not even just Oregon. This is a national, nationwide issue since 2020. Construction inflation has, has gone up significantly, and it's not predictable. We looked at a number of sources, and you know, a lot of the, the sources that we rely on, Morton, the Mortenson Construction Inflation Index, that's for the Portland area, showed increases of 30% over that timeframe. The Engineering News Record that, for the Seattle area, which, which is the index that we use to, for our fees and our SDC increases on an annual basis, showed 20% increase. We compared some of our street maintenance bids that we've gotten in 2021 and in 2023, and items like asphalt and aggregate were up 80%. So numbers are all over the board on, on construction inflation, really difficult to nail down. Excellent. So this is a, a chart from the federal highway that shows average construction inflation between 2020 and 2023 nationwide, and it's showing almost 54% increase. So something that's really affected this project when it comes to the budget. So Andrew touched on this a little bit. The project team did a really good job of trying to value engineer, reduce the costs, but still maintain that project, the project safety and operational needs. Like Andrew mentioned, we right-sized the bridge. That means we didn't carry that center turn lane through the bridge. We kind of narrowed it down to what's needed to serve all modes of users, all users for the, for the future. We kept the architectural features on the bridge simple. We're really limited to some concrete forms on the, on the parapet and did some decorative railing and some lighting, and that's it. Kept it simple. The curb and sidewalk on the south side of Beckman Road, we're keeping them as much of that as possible, and we're keeping a, a good portion of it, so not having that, you know, remove and replace costs. You know, this project has a lot of plantings on it, so really looking at, can we use smaller plantings, and can we space them out further? That actually made a big impact on the budget. As we mentioned before, we had two independent construction cost estimators take a look at the costs. This is done under a progressive design-build contract, so it's an open book project. We see all of the detail cost information that the contractor has, and we had that verified by two independent cost estimators to make sure that that, those costs were accurate. And then Andrew and I and our owner's rep had rigorous negotiations with the progressive design-build team, and that was held over three-week period to arrive at the guaranteed maximum price that's before you tonight. So a lot, a lot of work going in to getting to that, that final number and verifying that it is accurate. So how do we fill that funding gap? Keith, Catco, and I, the Finance Director, have been working together, looking at what funding is available, coming up with a plan. In high level, there's some ability to reprogram some water funds, some road SDCs and road operating funds, but the bulk of the, of the, filling the gap is going to come from an interfund loan from the Water Operations Fund, and that would be repaid by the Willamette Water Supply lease balloon payment that is occurring in two years. A portion of that would go back to paying off that interfund, Water Operating Fund loan. And then we're also continuing to collect that Frog Pond infrastructure fee as development continues in Frog Pond West, and that would also, as those fees come in, that would go to pay off that loan. And then as Andrew, Andrew mentioned, we would be doing the storm restoration work following this project, and that project is largely funded by stormwater fees.
And that gets us to why we're here at council. The proposed action we request would be approval of Resolution 3022. However, there's a, a lot on these slides and a lot to take in, so we want to open the floor to discussions.
Any comments or questions? Counsel Dunwell.
I appreciate all the work that you've done to get us to this point, and I think that the pain that Wilsonville is feeling for a necessary infrastructure and bridge work, and I do believe that it's necessary, is something that so many cities like ourselves are feeling the pain of right now. I'm pleased to see that we have a path to make up the difference in any shortfall, so that we can not delay the construction, and it's, you know, my understanding that with the school opening in 2025, having that bridge in place and open either at the time the school opens or very shortly after, is really important to all of our citizens, particularly all of those young students that will be riding buses, and it's a life safety issue in many cases. So thank you.
All right, I appreciate your summary. Go ahead, Council President Ockerville.
Thank you. Thank you for delivering difficult news, but it, but it is good to see that, you know, we've got, we've got a path forward and, and something to bring us through on these important projects. One question, just kind of a clarifying question. You had a slide where it, the, the, the work for the Section 1, Section 2, Section 3 was, was all mapped out, kind of bulleted, right? And was, was that always kind of our original plan? Can you remind us? Was that always our original plan of how, how the work would be spaced out? So we knew Section 3 here was coming, and we knew all of this would need to be solidified for, for that third section. Kind of the, the surprise in some of this was the increase in costs, which we're seeing in everything. And as a city council member, it is concerning, because I'm realizing this news is not just going to pertain to this Beckman Road project, but it's going to pertain to many other projects that we'll, we'll talk about at different points. Just wanted to clarify, this was always, always our, our path forward, but the one surprise was, was the costs that we're looking at right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I would say the one thing that, that Andrew touched on a little bit is that we initially thought that the stream restoration would happen with the bridge construction.
Yeah.
But other than that, yes, this is, this is how it was planned to be constructed.
And then can you give us a little bit more on what we should anticipate? I understand that, that'll still be happening, delayed, kind of parallel project, and, and slightly moved down the road a little bit. Are you able to give more details at this point?
Yeah, so one of the things we found is we weren't able to do some of the flow mitigation that's needed with that stream restoration. So when we pull out that flow control structure, it's going to increase flow in the creek, and we need to mitigate that. And so what we realized in design is that we need to do that somewhere else. And to do that, we need to permit, environmental permits need to be for the stream restoration and that mitigation site at the same time, and we're just not able to do all of that and construct the bridge in the same timeframe. So we have agreement from the regulatory agencies to move forward with the bridge construction, as long as we keep moving towards that stream restoration and flow mitigation work in parallel.
I see. And as you've explained time, it sounds like time is very important here on this project, and it affects multiple things, cost being one of them. So that makes sense. Thank you.
So I just would like to say thank you. I, I think Wilsonville's really lucky to have staff that saw our problem and they analyzed it, and they looked at the options of how we could best resolve the problem that was going to be in a, a time and a cost-effective manner. And I really appreciate how you brought forth the well-thought-out report, and, you know, nobody wants to see costs increase, but like you said, it's not only happening here in Wilsonville, but it's statewide and nationwide. And so thank you for all your effort, and thanks for coming back with solutions, too.
All right. I think everybody brought up the, the best, the good, really good points. I don't, I don't have any new points that have not yet been brought up, so thank you very much.
I do have one more question, though.
Okay.
On the value engineering, you talked about some of the changes you were making to the bridge. Do, and do any of those effectively change traffic flow or options for drivers? There was something about a lane.
No.
Okay.
No, they don't, yeah. The original assumption at the start of the project was to carry the same road cross-section all the way through, but through the design, we were able to, there's no reason to have that center turn lane be carried through the bridge, because there's no turns needed through there.
Don't want to turn on a bridge, right?
Right.
Nope. Great, thank you.
So yeah, so we were able to, and we really looked at where we could reduce with, but still maintain the needed access, yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
One, one question that I have is on page six of seven, at the top of that page, when we talk about the stream restoration and flow mitigation work. Can you touch on the, the projected financing plan for that?
Yeah, so that project will be largely funded by storm system development charges and operation funds, and our recommendation is to just hold off on some stormwater maintenance projects until we have a better understanding of what that project cost will be. So we're just entering into design right now for the flow mitigation, and we should have better cost understanding about a year from now.
So I guess one, one other thing. So this is, we will continue to hear more than, I assume, about the stream restoration and flow, but this work here then, that's included in the resolution that we have before us tonight in the public meeting, this is the complete and end to the project, correct? So.
Except the stream restoration will be a separate project.
Right. But, but to, to everything that's outlined in the contract, this is, is the end.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The last phase, I should say.
I'm not going to say last call.
Yeah.
Additional. Have we got everybody's, okay? Staff, have we given you what you needed?
Yes, great. We'll be back in the, during the new business with the resolution.
Just, I will note that we, we don't have a presentation plan for that, but staff will be available for questions.
So this has been our, our point in the meeting to discuss this item.
Thank you.
So we've got all our questions answered, and thank you. That will bring us to, back to the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study, which is a, another really big project. Matt Lorenzen.
We'll see if second time's a charm here. Appears it is. I look okay? Thank you. Good evening. My name's Matt Lorenzen. I'm the City's Economic Development Manager, and I manage the City's urban renewal programs as well. Do we have Nick joining us? Okay. I was going to be joined by Nick Popanuck, one of our consultants on this project. He was trying to make two meetings tonight, one in Beaverton, one in Wilsonville. It looks like maybe due to the technology situation, you may have missed us, but I think that's going to be just fine. The bulk of our conversation will really be about projects and not as much about public finance at this point. My goal here is to be really succinct, and that causes me a little bit of pause, because I want to make sure we do this topic justice, but I think the more important part here is that we have time for dialogue and discussion and questions. So we have 25 minutes, and we'll use that as effectively as possible. Just want to quickly point out where we are now. We're at our second-to-last briefing. On the 18th, I will be back again this month to bring the final feasibility study for the Town Center Urban Renewal Plan. We will look at draft ballot language and our communications plan, and then you can see how the rest will potentially unfold, leading up to a potential advisory vote in May of 2024. Are there questions about the timeline and next steps?
A quick question. Is that, is that timeline typical, or is that unusually tight?
This is, we feel totally workable. The only component of this timeline that's going to be a little bit tight is the last item, June to August of 2024. We'll be in a little bit of a crunch to get the formal plan adopted. Right now, we're just doing the feasibility portion of it, but provided we have a yes vote on the, in, in May from Wilsonville voters, we'll then move to adopt the formal plan. Normally, that takes three to four months, but this feasibility study, and I quote our consultants here, is the longest and most in-depth feasibility study they've ever completed. And all that means for our purposes is that it makes it that much easier to just convert it into a plan that's ready for adoption. There's much less work that has to be done once we get that vote completed. Thank you. In a previous work session, we looked at assumptions that then informed the projections for the financial capacity of a potential urban renewal district and town center, and the key takeaway there is that in 2023, we have basically $101 million of financial capacity to complete projects with over the lifespan of an urban renewal plan. The red asterisk was simply to indicate that our projections right now show that we could retire all debt by year 28 or so, but these projections take us through year 30.
Excuse me, is the, can you just reiterate the maximum timeframe allowed?
For, there's no statutory rule that says that an urban renewal plan must not exceed a certain duration, but best practice tells us that we want to set a time certain end date, or at least a target. At this point, we have heard from our partner taxing agencies that they would like to see a time certain end date included in the urban renewal plan.
And that has been a, a method that has served us well in the past with the other successful projects, is having a time, a reasonable timeframe.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So again, just trying to recap a bit, what we're trying to accomplish with this So again, just trying to recap a bit, what we're trying to accomplish with this urban renewal plan is to fund and implement the Town Center Plan adopted in 2019, taking us from the existing conditions characterized by less dense development, vast parking lots, oriented as you see on the screen, with underground utilities that go every which way and will need to be realigned with a future street network, and eventually end up with a built form that looks something like this. And we talked in a previous meeting about how this is entirely conceptual. We don't know what development proposals we will see and how the layout will be, but we know that will be, there'll be much greater connectivity with a local street network and stories, excuse me, buildings that have multiple stories. This two-dimensional view doesn't really help us to understand that, but there would be buildings with multiple stories and mixed use along the north-south Main Street. In the Town Center Plan, there's a slate of infrastructure projects that are recommended to be completed. And so that is the starting point for our planning work in determining which projects would be included. Everything you see on this list should look familiar in that they are included in the Town Center Plan with the exception of the last two. The Town Center Plan does not speak specifically to what type of parking solution there is recommended, but rather that there should be parking solutions. And then finally, what you'll see on our project list, which we'll review in a moment in greater detail, are economic development programs and projects with a large allocation to property acquisition and disposition. If you're following along, there are several attachments to the staff report, and the first attachment is of a spreadsheet we will get to in just a moment. The second attachment is this map of project locations. So this is just helping you to translate this list of projects geographically. And this is an excerpt from the Town Center Plan. And so this takes us to where I expect we will spend the vast majority of our time this This is included in the staff report, but I'm going to reiterate it now because I feel like it's important. What this spreadsheet is, this is a good faith demonstration that between three main funding sources, first being city system development charges, second, private development exactions and dedications, and third, urban renewal, which we're discussing tonight, that this list of projects can be completed provided all of our forecasting assumptions hold true in the future.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Now, where do we stick that? Try there. That stays.
It wants to stay there.
I guess so.
So if you could just reiterate the name of that column for the people watching.
Yeah, that, it says URA, which stands for Urban Renewal Agency, and then in parentheses below it, GAP Funding. So again, the three sources of funding, city SDCs, developer contributions, and then, thank you so much, urban renewal.
Great.
It's also important to recognize and understand for everyone watching and also for your knowledge what this is not. This is not a commitment by staff or by the council to precise project costs or exact cost-sharing allocations that will be used in the future. And it's also not a commitment that we will absolutely complete all of these projects throughout the lifespan of the urban renewal plan if one is adopted in the future. This is a good faith demonstration, and it provides us with the basic demonstration that we can get where we want to go.
And it also does not try to identify the order of projects, right?
Right. We talked about that very briefly in a previous meeting, and the task force has spent some time talking about it as well. Because many of these projects will be completed in conjunction with private development, and we don't know when that private development exactly will occur or where it will occur, it didn't seem useful to try and prioritize these in any way or order them sequentially. We look at this as basically a menu that we can order off of as opportunities arise. So with that, I want to stop there and leave the remainder of the time and just ask for what questions you have about these projects, either individually, about the numbers you're seeing and the cost allocations that you're seeing. I could speak more to it, but I think much of what I would say will come out within the context of discussion.
And this is work session, so go ahead and just speak.
So I take pause at the very top with the pedestrian bridge. It says current 2023 estimate. Knowing that we are in a continual inflationary environment, are we making allowances within these estimates as if it were built in 2023, or it's some, you know, within a five-year period, or something along that line? Because I, I asked myself the question when I looked at it, what if it takes five to seven years to get one of these projects started?
Yeah.
And then you're potentially seeing a significant increase in the price?
It's a good question. I'll go back here. The figure that you see above the capacity, the maximum indebtedness, that number reflects that the project cost of any given line item, not just the I-5 pedestrian bridge, is going to go up in time as the value of the dollar goes down in time. So the short answer, I guess, to your question is that, yes, it's been accounted for. This spreadsheet assumes that everything would be built right here, right now, with the value of the dollar as it is. But the maximum, over the life of the plan, we will have $181 million to spend, not 101.
So who makes, and this is just me coming in relatively fresh to this, who makes a decision on the timing of which project? There is so much built into here. When you're looking at prioritization of timing of which project goes when?
Yeah, so certainly, the bike and pedestrian bridge is a priority. We're talking internally right now about writing a federal grant to try and secure some money for that project. That would move its timeline to construction forward. Outside of that one project, I'm trying to look at line items to make sure I'm not misspeaking, but the rest, the balance of what you see here is really going to be driven by the private sector and what projects are brought forward. If it's a project, for example, that's adjacent to Courtside Drive, then that's going to mean that we're going to then shift energy toward Courtside Drive to make sure that it can be developed in conjunction with that project that's adjacent to it.
And I would add that there's also going to be discussions and analysis as we work with developers that maybe have interest in investing in Wilsonville, and also internally with staff about which projects would maybe facilitate private development. So all those discussions will be taking place as well.
And wouldn't there, there may be, I'm just thinking and looking at the map and so forth, to that same point, potential cost savings as things roll along, like, oh, a developer wants to do this project. If we could get an adjacent one going, there could be some cost savings there. But we can't control all that, the timing, but sometimes there are things that happen easily, or more easily if they're done simultaneously.
Yeah. And there's plenty of good examples of that throughout the Town Center Plan and in this list. There's a promenade, for example, that goes from the landing of the bike and pedestrian bridge, heading east to connect into the Emerald Chain and the rest of the bike and pedestrian infrastructure that runs southeast toward Memorial Park. If the sites adjacent to that promenade don't develop or take longer to develop, the city may elect to take on that project 100% as a publicly funded project. But if there is an opportunity to partner with a private development project, then of course, we would pursue that.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the underground utility relocation?
Happy to. It's a very large line item. It goes back to this diagram. This is showing our water, storm water and wastewater infrastructure throughout Town Center, and you can see how it sort of traverses properties diagonally in every which way. As development occurs, the intent for the connectivity pattern in Town Center is for it to be much more grid-like. And so these lines that are running every which way are going to need to be realigned to follow the alignment of future streets rather than going every which way. Because where you may see a diagonal line now, there will hopefully one day be buildings.
So will there be kind of like a grand master plan of where we think these utility lines will be, and then as the projects come in, that gets implemented, or is it going to be more peaceful?
There's a subsection, several subsections of the Town Center Plan that look at wastewater, storm water, what did I say, wastewater, storm water, and water, and how they would align and which direction they would flow, et cetera. I haven't pulled those diagrams to put up in front of you tonight, but yes, at the conceptual level, there are plans already in place. But again, because we don't know the precise location of the local street network, some of that will be part of the development review process, and engineering will help those developers to align those, that infrastructure properly.
Is there going to be a substation in this area?
An electrical substation?
Like an electrical substation.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah.
We're close enough to one.
Is that the post, by the post office or the community center?
That's a training site for PGE.
PGE does have plans for adding capacity, though, but it would be farther north outside of the Town Center area. They've secured property in the city to look at an additional substation.
So can you provide me a little bit more insight on the advisory vote and the process? So my understanding is, is it will come in front of council at our next council session, correct?
Yes, we'll have draft ballot language.
Okay, draft ballot language, and then it would be in, on the May ballot, correct?
Yeah, we'll look at draft ballot language in two weeks. And then based on the feedback that we get from council and informed by, we've already been working on it internally, and legal has taken a look at it, but we'll want to probably take a really close look at it before we bring it back for final adoption. We'll also have it reviewed by the Elections Division of the Secretary of State's Office for compliance. When we've accomplished that, on January 18th, we'll have final ballot language, which you would adopt, and then by resolution, refer the matter for a vote.
And that is an advisory vote?
Correct. Non-binding.
Non-binding. I'm really excited, super excited about what this master plan can look like. And I think about that, I'm going to go back to the pedestrian bridge again. Have there been conversations with developers or with other cities to speak about, the bridge comes first? Is that part of the necessary feature that a developer would find attractive in order to build out some of this property?
We haven't heard from developers, we will not build unless the pedestrian bridge exists. However, we have had several members of the development community on our task force say the connectivity between the employment area and the transit center on the west side of I-5 and getting greater access into Town Center would bolster the feasibility of development projects. So we haven't heard them say, we can't build unless the bridge is there. But we have heard them say, if the bridge exists, it makes our development project much easier to pencil out and to finance.
I wondered if you could talk to us a little bit about the project? Can we go back to our big spreadsheet?
Yes.
Yeah. The items under the economic development programs and projects, and kind of talk to us about how those items or projects would help produce the vision that we've had for Town Center?
Yes. So in a previous work session, I devoted a substantial amount of time to talking with the council about the idea of acquiring property that's made available from a willing seller, entitling it if need be, programming it with a vision and a development program that is in alignment with the Town Center Plan, and then offering that property back to the private development community to build what the city and the council have developed as a vision for that property. So that real estate activities line item with $19 million allocated to it would be for that purpose. The nice thing about that line item, and thank you for bringing it up, is that it acts as a bit of a revolving fund. For example, if a property were acquired for $10 million, we certainly wouldn't write that value down to zero when we sold it. There might be some sort of a discount to offer it as an incentive, or, you know, there could be varying reasons. But that money can be spent, and then it will come back to the agency and can be respent without counting against our maximum indebtedness. So it would be very helpful in that regard if we use it strategically. It can be used multiple times. As far as site preparation goes, this is, and I have this, I think in the notes, demolition, grading, land use applications, professional services such as preparing that RFP to put it out for development acquisition, and then development and teneting incentives. This has the Town Center Plan in mind as well, where it makes recommendations to have programs and funding available to support legacy businesses that might be facing displacement pressures. It also gives us funds that we might use to attract the type of businesses and users that we want to see in certain strategic places throughout Town Center. There could be, for example, an incentive attached to a certain space that's available for lease if the council wanted to prioritize, say, you know, a restaurant or whatever it might be.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. So speaking of, I thought I'd maybe ask you to, maybe just prompt you to speak to some of the things in this vision that we've discussed, as some of the other counselors have already brought up, that I'd like to see, just remind us of. And all some of the vision, some of the potential additions to Wilsonville that we do not have now, again, are hypothetical and visionary. For example, when you're looking at a, you know, we're looking at a number of multi-story buildings. We do have a vertical design.
Vertical housing development zone.
BHZZ, Vertical Housing Development Zone, which helps, is another way to incentivize development. And as I understand, those buildings that make use of that incentive would need to have an activity on the ground floor that would be available for use by the public. And there could be some really exciting things that could be in there that we have to figure out how to do them. It could be, I've heard people, you know, how they would be funded? Would it be a nonprofit organization running some activities? Would it be performing arts, shared gallery space? Or would it be a retail function that is available, you know, on the private side 100% and open to the whole public to come in and use that? So it's, those are some exciting things. And another one is, I'd like to see in a future meeting, I don't know how, what kind of tools we have, but if we can have a 3D drawing again brought up of Town Center and maybe develop, we have a lot of information about the Town Center Master Plan on our website, and I think one of the tools in there is called the story, storyboards. What is that?
I'm not sure I know what you're referring to.
Well, there's a sort of progression of how this came to be on the city website. I can't remember what the. I can't remember what the name of that is.
It might be a story map.
Story map. That was it. So the story map, and I'd like to highlight that again in some of our materials so that the public and our residents and businesses can go back and just refresh their thinking on the vision. None of this is prescribed in great detail, but the council passed it in 2019. And they passed it after what I believe to be one of the most, if not the most significant, community input efforts that the city has ever had. So going to people, going to gatherings, mailing things out. I'd like to make sure that we remind people of that so that, because it has been, the pandemic brought in this slowdown mode on several things. And so I'd love to see kind of a refresh of how we got to where we are and some of the ideas so that people can be thinking about that. Because nobody is going to care more about the exciting future that we, that we have the potential to develop in Wilsonville than the people who live in Wilsonville. They're the ones where, and the people who do business here and have the, have a share in the, the great diversified economy that we have. So just, maybe we even see some signage that outlines it a little bit at a high level. Maybe we see some brochures, some periodic programs. Because I don't want to assume that all of us have time to take an evening and delve deeply into the city website and study it on our own. We probably won't.
I agree. I'd like to add on to that a little bit too, because if you'll recall, two or three sessions ago, there was a presentation on multimodal transportation. And I kept thinking about that when I was reading this, the Town Center staff report. Because I challenged the, the group, the team that was presenting, that we are not a city designed for multimodal. We're a city split in half and then, and then quartered by I-5 and the Willamette River. And there are last mile issues and there's I-5 issues crossing I-5. And when I thought about the possibility of what this future could look like, it truly is bringing a multimodal model to our city. So you are getting individuals, whether they want to walk or bike, over to the train or the bus. They could walk to a grocery store. They could, it, it knits it together in a way that I had never seen before. I, you know, I hope that I'm a really, really old, active woman who can use this when it all becomes a reality. But this is the future of how we make this city a true city with a heart. So, super excited about it.
Yeah. If I may, I'll respond quickly to that and then to the mayor's comments. The council president, Akerval, has served as the council liaison to the task force and done an excellent job. And she punctuated our final meeting just last week with some comments around how the Year 2000 Plan, the city's first urban renewal plan, really provided the framework of Wilsonville as we know it today. And this plan, at least as I see it, really helps us to now kind of color in the lines, if that analogy makes sense. So I concur. And then, let's see if I can remember mayor, oh, with regard to communications. So I will spare you because we're just about out of time, but when I return on the 18th, we'll be talking about what communications we have planned, which would include a standalone website and a video which will bring some life to this very black and white.
Right.
Boring representation of what is really a grand.
Right. I'm glad to see that. And I wonder if, I wanted to also commend council president Akerval and all of the members of the Urban Renewal Task Force for the incredible volume of work, which includes not only vision, visionary, listening mode, collecting information, analyzing it, and all of that together. And I wonder, council president Akerval, if you might want to say a few words about the committee and the makeup of that Urban Renewal Task Force.
Yeah, I think we're really fortunate to have that task force. And I've appreciated all the participation that we've had. We have participation from the overlapping taxing districts, such as the school district, such as Twelton Valley Fire Rescue, Clackamas Community College, Clackamas County has been involved as well. We also have representatives from the business community that serve on that task force and community members, residents of Wilsonville. And developers as well, to give that perspective of, you know, what, what might be feasible and pencil out and what they're valuing, what they're looking for as well. So it's, it's really a fantastic thing to have that collection of people working together and looking at this because everyone brings a different perspective. But collectively, this work, I mean, I'll say it again, it is, it will like define the city. This is huge. This will create what Wilsonville will be in another 30 years. You know, if, if this urban renewal district is, is something that comes to fruition. We can see from the project list, all of the projects that may be accomplished that have quite a price tag. So we don't have a lot of options on, on doing those projects in another way. But then taking a leap from the project list and being able to imagine and envision what that project list would support, what, what the feel of the community would be, what the types of, you know, businesses that we might have in our, our city might be, the, the mobility that would then be possible, the human connections that could be possible from, from this project work list and the work that, that would be done. I mean, that's, that's the part that makes it real. And I think what we've seen be such a great success with the, with the Year 2000 Plan in Wilsonville. So we have a history of, of having some terrific success in, in Wilsonville. And I just appreciate everyone's work in, in preparing all this information and digesting it and analyzing it and critiquing it along the way so that we might be afforded similar success with a year, with the urban renewal, excuse me, the Town Center Urban Renewal if we, if we go in that direction.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Now I have another question for you, Matt. And we do have a few minutes. I looked at this.
Okay.
We're okay to 6:30. We have 25 minutes for the next item. Since the Year 2000 Plan was brought up, and that's some kind of category of discussion that some people have had, but could you just give us an example of what, for the public, what the Year 2000 Plan brought to Wilsonville?
Sure. A successful urban renewal program is multifaceted. It gets at community development in that it is adding amenities that makes a community a whole community, brings together the community. It's also, on a more practical level, a way to leverage existing assets, in this case, land and real estate, for its greatest potential value, which underwrites the city's finances into the future. So it's, it's, it's financial security building for that, and it's also community development simultaneously. As far as the Year 2000 Plan goes, it accomplished both. So many of the parks that we love, Memorial Park and Marasse Plaza, Stein-Bouger Barn, the improvement of Wilsonville Road, the construction of Canyon Creek Road, the wastewater treatment plan was completely renovated with urban renewal funding. The core infrastructure of the city that allowed development to occur was, was made possible by the Year 2000 Plan. And that development that did occur is what supports our tax base today.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And when I moved to Wilsonville, the expanded wastewater treatment plant was, was, it still had some work to go to, to be, to get completed. But there was enormous community pressure to have that wastewater treatment plant. So the option of continuing along with the old one was not an option. And when we go to, and of course, none of us really love talking about wastewater treatment plants. So envision, envision the beauty of Memorial Park and, and the functionality of Wilsonville Road and all these things along with that wastewater treatment plant. And that came about for, I want to thank, prior Urban Renewal Task Force members who played those same roles that council president Akerval described, prior city council members and prior, and many members of the community who were involved in developing and supporting those visions. And I think you're right, that, that defined a lot of our city right there. And now we're at another point. And we really would not have been able to do any of those things without the type of power that tax increment financing brings. So this is an exciting time for our community. Any other questions, Council Barry?
No, except for I, I do think that it's important that we, we keep in mind the projects in the past that were successful when we're talking about the future, when the one that we're talking about now. Because I think it makes it more tangible and easier for people to understand. So when you come back in a couple of weeks, that might be helpful.
Absolutely. Yeah. Part of our communications plan is to call upon the successes of the past to gain confidence in this plan for the future.
Yeah. I like that. Very good point. All right. Thank you, Matt. And I appreciate all of that information, everybody's work. And that brings us to the last item on our work session, which is Frog Pond East and South Development Code with Dan Pauly.
Good evening, council. Good to be with you. Dan Pauly, Planning Manager. Give me just a moment to bring up what I need to hear. All right. Thank you. So we continue to take bites out of this large body of work of updating our development code for this new and exciting part of Wilsonville. What we'll, I wanted to remind the council that what we'll discuss tonight is focused on supporting, meeting the council's adopted policies found in the master plan that was, was adopted actually a year ago here in a couple of weeks. So it's almost been a year since we actually adopted the master plan. But some key things around from there is housing variety and also limiting barriers to needed housing. Are two of those principles that really come through as we look at these development code amendments. Specifically tonight, we'll be looking at standards that really control the, the bulk and location of buildings, oftentimes citing and design standards is what we often call them. But there's some important standards that really have an impact on development. So let's cover what those will be tonight that we'll talk about. So those include things like lot size. And we're going to talk about a new approach to lot size tonight. Also, a different approach to front setbacks that's being contemplated. We'll also talk about a new to Wilsonville, but not necessarily new in the industry concept of floor-to-area ratio rather than lot coverage. Also going to talk about something fairly unique here, called maximum building widths. And finally, about side yards and managing particularly narrow side yards.
Dan, before you get started, just for context, all of this information that you set forth in the, in the staff report, what were you using as your foundational reference to make these proposed changes?
So I mentioned the Frog Pond Master Plan in direction, implementing language in the master plan itself. But other than that, kind of a foundation that we've looked at, where it makes sense is those standards that have worked in, particularly in Villebois and Frog Pond West, where those make sense, we've carried forward those standards, particularly things we're talking about tonight are primarily things that are different than, than those standards, that are new and different approaches that, that have really come up in order to address this housing variety and other things that are unique and, and specific to Frog Pond East and South. So really, the standards we're not really getting to, which will be presented at a future work session, but probably not really gone into in a lot of detail, are really carried forward from what's functioned well in other zones.
Outside of Villebois?
So it's Villebois, Frog Pond West has been, is a, is an important source, which subsequently, a lot of what's in Frog Pond West, a lot of that was actually carried forward from Villebois as well. As well as, as appropriate, other, our planned development residential zone, generally that applies in the city, which was updated a few years ago, also kind of be aligned with both those zones as well. With, so the planned development residential zone was updated to align better with the Villebois zoning as well as Frog Pond West zoning. So kind of taking a mix of what's worked best and tried to align things across our different zones. And where it makes sense, those are being carried forward. This is actually the same zone as Frog Pond West, but there are some unique aspects to East and South that need to be addressed differently. And I can, I'll get more into that. But does that, does that help?
Is it fair to say that another factor, contributing factor, there are state regulations that have changed in the last three and four, five years?
Certainly. That does, especially as we start even talking about lot size, that's a big factor. That, I mean, that really impacted some of what's in the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan, which now, of course, trickles down to what we're talking about in the development code. One of the primary thing there is the way that the middle housing standards work is, it ended up, there's no maximum density per se in Frog Pond East and South. There's a minimum density, but there's no maximum density. And so that really leads to the question, leads us to the fact that if there's no maximum density, which lot size or maximum lot size in particular, has historically been put in zoning codes as a way to regulate maximum density. And where that maximum density doesn't exist because of state law and related things, it doesn't necessarily make sense. It's, so taking that out allows us to simplify the code. So you avoid overlapping and conflicting standards that create more difficult calculus that doesn't end up working out. And also provides, at that same time, getting to that second part of really what the master plan was pushing for, is providing flexibility to, to produce more opportunities and removing barriers to, for production of smaller detached homes that can serve different, different housing needs.
I just thought of one more thing that may be influencing that is the, am I have the acronym, the order of words wrong again? The Strategic Equitable Housing?
The Equal Housing Strategic.
I always say that. Equitable Housing Strategic Plan also has, I would imagine, some influence here.
Yes. So I mean, we've been doing housing, I've had this slide in other presentations, but we've been doing housing projects from, I mean, the Equal Housing Strategic Plan, the Middle Housing Project. It's all related, kind of this project builds on that. And then our upcoming housing, our future project that we're working on right now, further builds and continues that work as we continue this important work around housing in Wilsonville.
And that's a, that's a project that the Planning Commission is working on?
Yes.
And they recently had a community forum about that.
That's correct. And council will be hearing much more about that project in 2024 and 2025. So, and we talked about removing this minimum lot size, but also what's important to understand, we're not totally ignoring what benefit that could have. Really, we're seeing that there's other standards that meet similar outcomes, that this includes something called building width that I'll talk about, where we actually regulate the width of buildings. Setbacks, I mean setbacks in themselves, kind of market, what the market wants to build for a house, plus the setbacks, really determines. for a house, plus the setbacks really determines lot size. And so do we need to artificially regulate that with, without any purpose? That's kind of the question we've asked and why we're recommending to take away minimum lot size. And also there's something I'll talk about more, as mentioned, floor-to-area ratio, which also kind of controls the bulk of buildings and gets to really those urban design standards and what things look and function as without having this minimum lot size. Another one I'll mention just briefly, because it is different, is front setbacks. Typically, front setbacks are the same throughout a zone or throughout a sub-district of a zone. But what we found and was suggested by some of our consultants is often that's, that's based on a boundary and those boundaries are often at streets. So you have different front setbacks on the same street because of kind of the color of a map. We recommend, the recommendation is to move from that and just have the front setbacks uniform on a street and be based on what street you're on, so that, and that creates a better transition in urban form between even different urban form districts. So that was, that was an innovation that was suggested to us by one of our consultants and we agree with and recommend for consideration. I, I want to hit all these and we'll come back and discuss as needed. Floor-to-area ratio rather than lot coverage. Lot coverage is, is something that exists in all of our residential zones today. It's really a standard that says a percent of lot coverage, of a lot can be covered by a building. This has historically been, oftentimes homes are built to the maximum lot coverage, especially in some of the newer zones, so that limits the ability to add ADUs and other things. And so that can be a barrier to some of the housing options that we're looking at. We're recommending going to a floor-to-area ratio, which is more a bulk standard where it talks about the amount of livable or habitable space compared to the lot size. And this introduces, besides just lot coverage, it introduces this, how height and lot coverage are related and could be trade-offs. And in reality, for the lower, for the, for, for urban forms one and two as mapped in Frog Pond East and South, it'll function a lot like lot coverage as well as urban form three, but really what it does is it encourages a lower height in urban form three to create that transect. And that, what I mean by transect is, as in Villebois, where you have the densest housing in the center and then it gets lower in different housing as you kind of fan out towards the edges and in different areas. Because of some state statute, we have to allow three-story or 35 feet everywhere in the plan. But having this trade-off introduced allows us to encourage that lower height where we would want from an urban design standpoint, a lower height in that urban form three, which is the less dense feeling area of the master plan. Maximum building width is a new type of recommended standard. We don't have this in other residential zones. This is another key that really helps differentiate the different urban forms. Essentially what it is, is you measure how wide a structure is facing the street. And the draft standards really, in urban form one, would essentially allow similar to the Village Center where you could have a block, a apartment building occupies a whole block, as we have in, in some places in the Village Center. Where urban form two would allow more, like a six to seven unit townhouse building that doesn't occupy a whole block, where you have at least a couple of units per block, and so there, it starts to break it up and have that and be setback a little more. And then in urban form three, which is again the, the less dense urban design, it's even a smaller, where a large, like street of dream type home would be the widest you could go, or you know, like a three, I forget, I think a four or five plex would be the most you, you could go as well. So it really helps differentiate how big buildings are in each of those zones, because again, in each of these zones, you can put any housing type, but again, we're regulating what form that housing type can take in each, in each different district. So we felt maximum building width is an understandable, we went back and looked and did a study, as you can find in your packet, looked at the built environment in Villebois and elsewhere in the city, kind of say, okay, for this type of housing that we're desiring and might go in these different districts, this, this seems appropriate based on, on the precedents in Villebois, Frog Pond West, and elsewhere in the city. But that said, I do want to call out, we, we've done our best, but we're still having conversations with the development community and doing tests to make sure that we get these numbers right, since it is a different, something we haven't done before. We want to make sure we get those numbers right, so we continue to test that. But we recommend it as a standard that is helpful to really create the intent of that master plan, to have a different look and feel as you progress through the neighborhood. As you get this much development, there's this question of side yards. And had a, just the basics of what we're looking at here is not having anything walled off or, you know, completely enclosed that's less than five feet wide. I will note something that, for anything smaller, you'd have a shared yard. I know something we do need to look at closer that we have, don't really have in Villebois, is the amount of like essentially a duplex or a, a two-unit building, because what you end up with those two-unit buildings is both sides are active, because the non-active side is the shared yard. So if you have two of those buildings together and they're both shared, how do you manage that yard in between? So there's some details that we still need to test of different unit types and make sure this is functional. It is, we would only allow any narrower yards for smaller buildings, which, and, but it's important that we allow some small yards, because that, otherwise that can become a barrier to actually producing some of these smaller detached homes that have been expressed as a desired product type.
So is that going to be a problem with the fire code?
No, fire code, it's like three-foot typical between structures, or you can always, if you want to put it closer, you can always do enhanced construction, which sometimes happens. But yeah, fire code would still need to be met, so that does drive some of the setbacks, naturally without, without having zoning setbacks. But you can always do an alternative and build, build it differently to put it closer and still meet those firewall standards.
I have a question on this slide that you just had on page three or five in the packet. The staff report mentions addressing concerns for side yards, we need to have clear requirements where separation between buildings is less than 10 feet. Can you speak to what, how you're getting to the five-foot reference?
Yeah, so assuming 10-foot, that that's centered on a property line typically?
Oh, you're saying five to the property line?
Half of the 10 feet would be five, yeah.
Got it, okay. And, and I was just going to say that I appreciate what, what this is saying here, because in, in all of our, in these kinds of neighborhoods, we're also trying to achieve with our equitable housing strategic plan and, and addressing the regulations that are put on us, and also trying to make, to make, cover some ground in, in getting some affordable housing out there. Nationally, you read articles about this across the whole country, the smaller house is important. And once you get to the smaller house, you have a smaller yard. If that yard is a fenced-in, narrow piece of land, it, I don't think it achieves much in terms of, you know, it's not very usable by the person, by the people living there. But I've seen if it's fenced in, because it just isn't accessible, but I've seen those look really useful and in terms of a view shed, in terms of having pollinator-friendly plants and erosion control, where they are, and we see that in Villebois and other places where they're not fenced in, and that is an open passageway between those two houses. It also doesn't, with an HOA, you're not requiring that homeowner to build, maintain, rebuild every few years that fence for that very small area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I have some of the same issues. If you jump over to page four or five of your staff report, I can answer your, the helpful feedback, no, yes, no, yes, yes. So the minimum lot size and the small yards, I'm saying no to those, just on initial reaction. And on the side yards, you know, the old saying that says tall fences make great neighbors? I actually think because of these small yards, no fences make safe neighborhoods. Because I get, I become concerned when you start fencing these off, you lose control of what happens inside. And yeah, we, we read the entire council packet, and one of the things that crossed my mind as I was reading this was, we're also talking about friends of trees later on, and we're also talking about the, what's it called, backyard habitat. Small fenced-in yards that you, you have no control over what the homeowner is doing in that, in that small fenced space feels diametrically opposed to what we could be doing with quality backyard habitats. I, yeah, personally, because I live in an area that has some of those, a lot of them turn, turn into personal junkyards. There is no control over growth, you've got weed issues, whereas if it is open and it's accessible, you would want to have line of sight control so that you don't have people hiding in those areas, but you would, you know, by possibly even having HOA control over those spaces as far as maintenance, even though they're owned by the homeowner, I am concerned about allowing any fencing in there.
At a certain small size.
Yeah, at a certain small size.
Yeah, I will mention a couple of things to just keep in consideration, that historically, this, on private residential lots, the city hasn't regulated fences, are very limited. Like we don't permit fences, you can put in a permit, a fence without a permit. And we don't, we don't regulate landscaping on private.
I guess maybe it's a, it's an HOA thing, so I just, I think, how do we not accidentally end up with these little compartments that end up adding to the price of the house? Because it's part of your footprint, but it's not a usable piece of land.
Yeah.
And so I just, I don't know how to exactly do that, but to your point, the city is not the one telling them to do that, but it must have been something in the, in the design plan, the design code of a neighborhood that said, okay, we want fences in the front, we want it to look like this. And if, if that's not kind of detailed out very well, you can end up with some dog run type yards. And what's not good about some of those is where they have a gate at one end, there's no door coming from the house into the yard, and then there's a fence at the other end. So it's not really a useful asset.
And I think we're going to continue this conversation around these side yards, because I know this is important to Council. As we have, I don't, I think it's tricky to do it directly, so kind of the approach we recommend is requiring it to be in CCNRs for HOAs to enforce. And you see here some draft concepts about maintenance, limited visible storage access, and also non-compatible vegetation, so there's not a tree or a shrub that just like blocks the whole thing. Yeah, so.
I know we're getting short on time, but, but I, I think a big and a really important area that probably needs a little more discussion is on the no minimum lot size. So on first glance, that can look scary. However, I think it, it really does have value. And if you could make, I don't know if the Council wants to talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, yeah, I know, I understand, that's a big change, so I agree that that's something that we can definitely come back and kind of work session a bit more.
For me, it would be really helpful to have some drawings that kind of say, you know, this is what it would look like with the lot size minimums and without, just.
The pluses and minuses.
Yeah.
I think that needs more discussion.
Okay.
And as, as we do that continued discussion, one piece that I would be interested in as we're looking at these proposed recommendations and things that we're working through, you know, tonight in your presentation, you've mentioned ADUs a couple of times. And I would be curious how all of these points that we're looking at, how those might either encourage or hinder ADUs, because that is one piece that we have talked about as a Council in our concerns and efforts and attempts to try to have more affordable housing options woven into this community. It feels like ADUs are an important part of that. So I'd like to hear how each of these points might interact with ADUs specifically. Thank you.
Yeah.
And maybe how, whatever the city can do to reflect that in potential HOA regulations.
Yeah, and any thoughts on those others, on the setbacks or FAR that we should prepare or come back or any, how are we feeling about?
Discussion, we think we just need further discussion on those.
Okay.
I, personally, I like the creativity, but having some visuals would help.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our work session at 6:57 PM, and we will reconvene for our regular city council meeting at, let's say, 7:05? Thank you.
Sooner?
Can we do it sooner?
Because the soccer team is here and they will be heard.
Well, let's start at seven, reconvene at seven, okay. Reconvene at seven, okay.
Now, I want to write to them and say, well, I really wasn't that good. But, and the last point I'll say is, we had a game with University of Oregon. And so my parents drove 350 miles from way down south in the state to go to this game. And it was so new, it was pouring down rain. We got there, just to be grateful for what you have today. Women got there, we realized it was a Saturday. Girls' sports were so low on the totem pole that University of Oregon had completely forgotten to open Otzen Stadium. And so, we climbed over and we played the game. So, I'm glad things are working so much better now. So, thank you for your leadership, and I would like to call you up by name and we'll give you your certificate, starting with Jasmine Brown. Yes, then you can sit down. And now--
Do you want me just to hand it to the mayor?
Yeah, there you go. Cameron Shawn. Carolyn De Lamont. And this bring, and a couple of the team players were not able to be here today, and we've given their certificates to the coach, and as well as the student managers. I would like to also ask for the head coach, Alex Bame, to come up. And Tammy Sue Bradley, Assistant-- Well, that--
We are going to get a picture with the city council and the student athletes up here in the hub. Probably have to make several rolls and--
Just watch out for the cords. I'm sure that soccer players can manage that.
You sure can. Take your proclamations and hold them up. That would be awesome. And we'll probably have you guys hang out for a bit, just in case your parents want to get pictures after we're done getting one for our newsletter. You're gonna probably have to push back a little bit, all the way back to the dais, and squeeze in as much as you can. Mayor, do you want to, do you want to go up in the middle so we can see you? Yeah. Let's see. Can you slide between those two? Young ladies, just go right between them. Can you get everybody in there?
Well, I can't see the back row real well.
Can't see the back row, yeah. You're gonna have to go down a little bit.
You don't have to, you're gonna get to the side. Whatever, whatever you're coming--
Let her come around.
Not you in the back, you stay tall.
All right.
That looks pretty good. Right here, right here.
So first, you're gonna be looking at me, and then, anyone else that wants to come up after I've taken the stage here is welcome to come on and get photos.
Hold that wall squat.
Two, three. All right, anyone else--
Come on up. All right, thank you.
I know. The shape you're in now.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Thanks, Coach. Great job.
See what?
And I did totally mispronounce one name that was just, why'd they, it was just Beam. Why'd they say Bame? Oh, well.
I didn't know that story. That was awesome. That was great, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, my dad wasn't gonna let that--
No, that was, I didn't know that story.
And he also started writing a lot of letters. Oh, I meant to watch that. But, you know, with our sports thing, we did not have teams. Right? Girls athletic, you didn't play anyone. It was just, go over and use the gym. There was no team. So, we did that. All right, a little quieter, a little smaller group now, for some reason. And so, we'll now review the contract renewal for Municipal Court Judge Fred Winehouse. And this is a renewal of the employment contract with Municipal Court Judge Fred Winehouse, as I described. And we are, I think, very fortunate in Wilsonville to have the services of Judge Winehouse for our municipal court, which is responsible for providing a local forum for adjudicating violations of city ordinances, parking infractions, and state laws within our jurisdiction. Judge Winehouse has served in the capacity of Municipal Court Judge since January 2017, and has served the city well in the education of cases, adjudication of cases in an expeditial, impartial, and consistent manner. And during his tenure, Judge Winehouse has promoted public safety, which is very important to all of us in this community and beyond, by bringing in education, adjudication, and compliance programs. So, staff recommends that the council review the employment contract for Municipal Court Judge Fred Winehouse for a period of two years, with an effective date of January 5, 2024. Council President Ockervall, could I have a motion to renew the employment contract for Judge Winehouse?
Yes, I move to approve the extension of Fred Winehouse's employment agreement as Municipal Court Judge from January 5, 2024, to January 5, 2026, as outlined in the employment agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Moved by Council President Ockervall, seconded by Council Berry. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Just a couple of things to review on my activities since November 6 as mayor, and we'll hear from the other councilors during their reports. We had another successful leaf day collection last month here at City Hall, and we had dozens of residents who stopped by to drop off their raked leaves for collection and composting by Republic Services. And during that event, the residents donated nearly $600 to Wilsonville Community Sharing, which is an optional part of the leaf drop-off. And that, Wilsonville Community Sharing is our local social services referral agency and our Oregon Food Bank operator, and they do an excellent job, very comprehensive job as the food bank operator, and also several other functions for people in need. And so, we really appreciate the donations to Wilsonville Community Sharing. I also spent several days in the last couple of weeks interviewing, conducting interviews with constituents in the area who have volunteered to serve on a city board and commission. And we are, again, so fortunate to have residents and business owners of such high caliber who apply to serve our community. I will be sharing with the council in the next week or so, my recommendations for the openings that we have. We do have more applicants than we do openings, again, and each time I have that situation, I regret that we can't appoint everyone. The applications do stay active for one year, so I look back to the overflow from the previous few months as well. And we're just, I think, very honored in this city to have so many people willing to dedicate their time in those, in that way. So, I will bring some recommendations to the council. They have all been provided with the applications to review as well, and then I will ask for their approval. And that will be at our next meeting. On November, I wanted to talk about the event that we had on November 16 here at Wilson, at Wilsonville City Hall, and many of the councilors were there. It was, we provided the venue for ODOT to convene, to put together an open house regarding the potential design for the Boone Bridge, which, as we know, is the I-5 crossing over the Willamette River that we talk about year in and year out in Wilsonville. Because it does cause a lot of traffic delays, as has been identified by ODOT. It also has seismic issues, and so they're looking at a couple of different design options for the bridge, and they wanted the input of the residents for that design. They actually, so made a presentation, a short presentation. They had several staff members who were, are involved with design aspects of the bridge, and were considering, could there be a bike-ped option attached to the bridge? Could there be a bike-ped bridge that is separate? And the people who attended that open house were encouraged to walk around and talk to the different engineers, the staff people who were presenting different aspects of those designs, and give some feedback. There was also a survey that people could fill out. ODOT distributed this postcard a couple of weeks in advance. And I appreciate everybody who came to the open house and some of the feedback we got from some of our councilors, especially Council President Ockervall on that survey, to make sure that the feedback that we got could be as useful as possible. And so, that, how many people did we have at that?
About 90.
90 people?
Yeah, I think it was around 100 as well.
Close to 100. So, we are, again, very lucky to have so much community input. This design of this bridge actually needs input from the local residents in order to get the attention on some of the design features. So, again, thank you for the residents for coming forth and also filling out surveys. These things all take a lot of time, and we appreciate that. So, whether it will be a sidewalk along I-5 on the highway bridge, or perhaps instead, it will be an option that the city has long advocated for based on citizen input, which is a French Prairie Bridge from Old Town to Clackamas County's Boones Ferry Marina. Those are the two different ways that the bike-ped design may end up developing. So, it is exciting to have ODOT looking at the French Prairie Bridge as a way to encourage more safety for bikes and pedestrians, and also helping us to get to that point where we eventually have a Portland metro area Ice Age Tonkin Trail with a Willamette Valley scenic bike route, which would really be an incredible tourism enhancement to our region. Right now, I don't think anyone recommends people ride their bikes across that bridge.
Or walk.
Or walk. The other important meeting that we had, that I attended, was a meeting here at City Hall with the Oregon Department of Aviation. And after a decade, and this is speaking to the prior city council before some of us were on the council, more than a decade of seeking to meet with leaders of the Oregon Department of Aviation, including, when I first became mayor in 2021, we finally had the opportunity for a very good sit-down, face-to-face meeting with three very engaged members of the Oregon Department of Aviation. And the purpose of that meeting, and attending the meeting, was Counselor Joanne Linville, who is not able to be here today, Community Development Director Chris Namsoo, both of whom serve on the Aviation Department's Aurora State Airport Planning Advisory Committee. We were also joined by City of Wilsonville's Public and Government Affairs Director Mark Ottenad, and Public Affairs Consultant Greg Leo, as well as Chris Namsoo, who's our Community Development Director. I might have already listed him. But I think we met for close to two hours with three members of the aviation staff, led by the new Aviation Director, whose name is Kenji Sugahara. And he has a very interesting background, is really interested in seeing some groundbreaking advancements in the Department of Aviation using drones, possible vertical takeoff aircraft, electrification of aircraft. So, it was exciting to hear about that. We also had a category of difficult discussions in the meeting, and we did not shy away from our difficult discussions. In our cordial but serious two-hour meeting, we reviewed a litany of issues that the City of Wilsonville has had with the way that things have proceeded regarding land use and transportation concerns around the Aurora State Airport, and the fact that, as we have expressed in numerous letters and other means of testifying with the Department of Aviation, the City of Wilsonville has not felt that they have had a legitimate seat at the table to express the concerns of our citizens regarding a potential 1,000-foot extension of that Aurora State Airport. You know, we want, we want more, we want to be, we've just basically asked to have a meaningful role in that discussion. And I feel like, based on this meeting that we just had, we broke into new territory, and I'm very encouraged, appreciate the discussion that we had. Director Sugahara and his staff indicated that the Department of Aviation, they said very clearly, they are turning over a new leaf in their relations with the local governments, and they're seeking to really have as much, as I interpreted it, very open, meaningful communication with communities that are affected by Oregon State Airports. And it is, you know, I think we have 24 or 28 state airports. The Aurora Airport is an important economic factor in our area. They play a really important role. We just want to have the proper role in participating in any planning for what may or may not happen regarding that airport as decided by the FAA, and that is a state airport. So, time will tell and how we proceed, but I'm very appreciative, and I feel like we've developed a good, workable relationship and look forward to continuing to be in touch. And I want to thank everybody who helped get us to that point. Couple of things I want to call, to just mention, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has started up their, they're about to start up the speaker series again. We had a great one last year. They are topic, covering topics critical to understand the lived experience of historically marginalized community members. And they've done that in the speaker series. They've also included columns written by members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that have a lot of compliments for their experiences in Wilsonville, and also talk about some of the difficulties that certain marginalized communities experience. And we've, it gives all of us a chance to hear how that is and think about how we might be able to alleviate some unnecessary challenges for our friends and colleagues. But coming up in just two days, local resident Elizabeth Brashir will share her story, which, and we have a poster in City Hall and I think at the library, probably, and it's advertised on the website. Her presentation is called "Fleeing Displacement and Escaping El Salvador's Civil War for Life in America." And I will note, Elizabeth Brashir is not related to our Smart Transit Director, Dwight Brashir. That was just, I'm sure he'll be glad to learn about her presentation, but they are not related. This presentation will be made at the Wilsonville campus of Clackamas Community College in the evening of December 6. I don't have the time right there in front of me. 6 o'clock, okay. It's an early presentation, and you can find out more on our website. And also, on December 19, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is hosting a Las Posadas event at the Wilsonville Public Library. And this is a global nine-day event during December that highlights the virtues of unity, hospitality, and faith through the biblical story of Mary and Joseph's journey to Bethlehem in search of shelter. Throughout Las Posadas, nightly celebrations reenact the nativity story and feature pinatas and a rich assortment of food, music, and holiday traditions. The DEI Committee Las Posadas celebration will include light refreshments, music, and other surprises to delight guests of all ages. This is an example of the kind of experience that our DEI Committee is bringing to our community as one, you know, it's an interactive, engaging way to learn about other cultures. I also want to recognize that December 18 to 26 is the Jewish Festival of Hanukkah that commemorates the recovery of Jerusalem and subsequent redirection of the Second Sorry, I do have a couple of other items. We have another big event that is happening at Wilsonville City Hall, and this is completely different, this is regarding transportation, but it's completely different from the open house recently held at City Hall. It was presented by Oregon Department of Transportation. Instead, on what we are going to see taking place at Wilsonville City Hall on December 14th is a legislative hearing at City Hall, and is a hearing put on by the Legislature's Joint Transportation Committee Subcommittee, Joint, the Subcommittee on Transportation from the Legislature, Joint Committee, Joint Transportation Committee Subcommittee Hearing. Sorry, it took me a bit to say that. So, this will be December 14th, and what is the time of that? I don't have the timeframe. 5:00 PM at City Hall on December 14th. I really encourage people to come to City Hall and listen to this unique opportunity to have a legislative hearing right here in town. And the Legislature's Joint Transportation Committee Subcommittee on Transportation Planning has put this together, and it is, the topic of this public hearing is on tolling. So, based on legislative direction, the Oregon Department of Transportation is working on plans to toll I-5 and I-205 as a way to generate highway improvement revenue and to manage traffic congestion. We've had many meetings about this at Wilsonville City Hall, many letters and communications. Many of our city councilors have gone to presentations for the last, I think, three or four years on this topic. So, this hearing is very important. This one, the Legislature will hear from our local residents, and some other city representatives will also come to this hearing. So, the focus of this public meeting is on three specific issues. The impact of tolling on local residents with limited alternative routes, public transportation in proximity to retirement communities. The Subcommittee invites public testimony from elected officials and local residents. You can sign up in advance if you would like to testify, and we have a place for you to do that on the city's website. The last item I would like to point to feature is that our Parks and Recreation Department was just awarded a $100,000 competitive grant by the Oregon Tourism Commission, which is doing business as Travel Oregon. This $100,000 grant is a feasibility study for a conceptual plan that focuses on ADA-compliant river access for non-motorized watercraft like canoes and kayaks at Boones Ferry Park. So, this is really an exciting development that comes from several years of hearing from our residents that they want this. They want to be able to access the Willamette River, and I agree with that. This is a sort of a community swell of interest that has been out there for several years, and it's been one of our council goals as well. So, this grant is really outstanding. It's a steep area heading down to the river, so it's not an easy thing to do. This grant will let us do a feasibility study and a conceptual plan that will outline how this could be built, because it's more than just a trail and a slope to drag your canoe down. It is needing to, of course, be ADA-compliant, which fits in with our DEI goals and our principles of inclusion. It's also a requirement. So, excited to see that part of our Parks Master Plan moving to the next step. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 18 at 7:00 PM. We do not have anything scheduled for community, for communications. Do we have anyone wanting to testify under citizen input and community announcements? If no-- Okay, we don't, so if any of the people on Zoom watching the city council meeting wish to testify, please use the raise hand feature. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the council on any matter concerning the city's business or any matter over which the council has control. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen's input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, we have no one waiting to testify, so that brings us to our counselor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Ockervall.
Thank you. Let's see, as the mayor mentioned, just a bit more information on ODOT's open house that occurred on November 16 for the Boone Bridge replacement project. I just wanted to note and help share the information that I believe an adjustment has been made to the survey compared to the survey that was distributed at, physically at, the paper copies at the event. So, if people filled out a survey at the event, that has been updated. And of course, sharing your opinion, your feedback is important, so wanted to make sure that everyone had that information. I also wanted to thank staff for all of their work that they did on the tree lighting event this last week. It was a really fantastic event, and the community members that were there representing the various musical groups in the city, adults and youth students alike were performing. And it's just terrifically fun. Santa and Mrs. Claus made-- Santa and Mrs. Claus made an appearance as well. Letters to Santa, the mayor did the big countdown and turned on the lights. But just a big thank you to staff for organizing that event. It's really nice, and the community members that support that event as well. And a compliment to staff for all the many different holiday lights, winter lights that are on display throughout the city. It's always fun to see those light up the streets and just kind of brighten these dark winter days that we are now in for several more weeks. So that is it for me tonight. I do want to, oh, I guess one other thing. We had some discussion in our work session about the Urban Renewal Task Force, and I did attend a meeting with them since our last council meeting as well. But I feel like the rest of council kind of got caught up on some of that work during our work session, and we will have more information coming to council on December 18th in the format of the final recommendation from that task force.
Well, we've got time if you want to give a little more feature on that, since everyone may not have attended the work session.
So, yeah, sure, let's, and I guess I can just briefly cover. So during our work session tonight, we looked at a project, proposed project list that might be included in that potential urban renewal district, which would be located in the town center area. On the 18th, we would be receiving our kind of formal recommendation from that task force, including proposed ballot language that would be for the May election. If we would ask the community members their thoughts on adding an urban renewal district in that town center area. We'd also have the draft of the feasibility study, which we've looked at as a task force. It is quite long. I believe we've got about 100 pages in that feasibility study, but it is complete with a lot of information that the task force has reviewed over the last several months of meeting leading up to this point. So looking at the finances of a potential urban renewal district, the projects which we reviewed this evening, and gathering feedback from the many entities that is part of that task force. And as I mentioned in the work session, we have representatives from the overlapping taxing districts, so this includes the school district. It includes Clackamas Community College, Clackamas County, the Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue are represented in that task force, as well as community members, residents of Wilsonville, and business member, or members of the business community, and developers looking at their perspective of what would be encouraging for that type of development that we want to see happen in town center that's, that's been long sought after, really stemming from that town center vision plan, which we adopted as a council in 2019, I believe. And that plan represented, it was at least two years of work, of feedback and community events, and now I'm kind of flying off the cuff, but I want to say that there was more than 200 events and surveys and feedback forums and monthly polls that went into that two years of engagement with the community members. I've been involved with that town center plan since the very beginning of my time on council, so I feel close to it. But I also remember a figure of if you counted up all of the responses to the surveys and the monthly polls and the every, you know, event and outreach and open house and the all the things in the parks and the schools and all those different places that we were engaging with the community on this. It was more than 2,000 people that were involved in submitting feedback. So the interest in that town center vision has been strong within our community, and it's exciting to see it come to this point where we're now potentially looking at how could we fund that plan? And, you know, what would that mean for potential businesses within our city? What could we see as far as development of that space within our city? It's a very exciting thing. So that's a little bit further information. Yep.
Appreciate that. Councilor Berry.
Thank you. It seems like it's been busy. So one of the things that several of us attended was the Wilsonville High School Performing Arts Center building dedication that was held on Monday, November 13th over at the new building, and that I thought that was really exciting. We're so fortunate to have a really good high school and for them now to have a top-notch performance center. I just, I'm thrilled for them. Let's see, I also attended the ODOT Open House along with several others. I won't dwell on that. But the Tourism Promotion Committee, we had meetings on November 9th and then again on the 29th, and we interviewed consultants to lead a strategic plan. And we selected two, we did the RFP, then we narrowed it down to two. We had interviews. One was by Zoom and the other one was in person, and we made our selection. So I'm really excited about that. Let's see, what else? The, on November 13th, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee, which mostly reports and discusses the regional transportation plan and tolling and urban growth. It just seems like it's an ongoing conversation, and they're going to meet again on Wednesday, December 13th, which I'm planning to attend. Those are the highlights.
Great. Councilor Dunwell.
Thank you. Just a couple of items that haven't been covered. What was the most impactful event for me over the last couple of weeks was the French Prairie Forum. Representative Kevin Mannix was our sole speaker, and he once again had an opportunity to present to the, all of the members of the forum, information and support for the feasibility study for the West Extension. And I continue to see this getting a groundswell of support from some, and I know I've spoken to this before and because I've attended other events, but again, I will reiterate that the bipartisan support of our representatives and our state senator on moving this forward and the support of the leaders of the community along the potential rail zone is very exciting to see. Whether it comes up in this short session and whether it can be moved forward will wait to be seen, because it is a short legislative session, but given the bipartisan support, I'm actually hopeful that something will happen. So very excited about that. And I thank Greg Leo for making sure that these French Prairie Forum meetings continue to provide us all with really great information. Also attended the tree lighting ceremony. Thank you. You did a great job pushing that big lever and getting all the lights going.
I was able to count backwards from 10.
You did a great job. You had a lot of helpers there, too. And we had great support from the community, but I was also pleased to see, I'd really like to call out Erica Baylor, because she did a great job, along with the rest of the Parks and Rec staff, on making sure this was an event that was really family-friendly and brought in people, and the rain stopped right before it started. Willamette Landing Heritage Area, attended that meeting, just continual conversations about their fundraising and where they're moving forward and some of the issues that they're encountering on working with some of the tribes. But other than that, just regular course of business. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I add one more thing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, please, you have one other thing.
I do, because I did mention this, that I'd really like to speak to this, because we are voting on two resolutions this evening that I brought up in our work session, because I am a huge supporter of them, both the Friends of Trees and the Backyard Habitat, and I'm really looking forward to being able to vote, to continue those relationships. Just a sidebar, Friends of Trees, if you pay any attention to what's been happening in Portland, they, they stopped their relationship with Friends of Trees this last year. And if you look at any of the media reporting on it, it's really, it's unfortunate, because we know that with, you know, some of our climate change issues that we're dealing with, even here in the Pacific Northwest, the tree canopy is really critical. And then also for Habitat, everything that we're doing with the Backyard Habitat Certification Program and continuing to grow that, I think is really important for us as a city going forward. So I'm really excited that we're looking at continuing that relationship. I'm very excited, like I said, in being able to support that when it comes up for a vote this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I wanted to add one more thing, just a solemn point, that we learned over the last couple of days that one of our community members passed away unexpectedly, and that is Dawn Anderson, the owner, co-owner of Vanguard Brewing passed away. So I just wanted to ask you all to think about him and his family. And his wife is one of our city volunteers as well. So we are thinking about them and all of their friends and family at this time. Okay, so that will bring us to the consent agenda. If the city attorney would please read that.
Yeah, big breath, okay. Resolution number 3094, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the sole source selection of Friends of Trees for fiscal year 2324 through fiscal year 2526. Resolution number 3095, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the updated South Metro Area Regional Transit Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. Resolution number 3098, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing acquisition of property and property interests related to construction of the Priority 1B Water Distribution Improvements Project. Resolution number 3100, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the sole source selection of the Backyard Habitat Certification Program for fiscal year 2324 through fiscal year 2526. Resolution number 3101, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville acting in its capacity as the local contract review board, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Absco Solutions for updating card access and security cameras at the library. Resolution number 3102, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville acting in its capacity as the local contract review board, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with CompuNet Inc. for refresh of the virtual computing environment and minutes of the November 6, 2023 city council meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Council President Ockerball, may I have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
I second it. The motion's been made by Council President Ockerball and seconded by Councilor Berry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to new business. If the city attorney would please read the resolution.
Resolution number 3022, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Three to the Progressive Design/Build Agreement for the Beckman Road Corridor Project with Tapney-Sunt, a joint venture.
Thank you. We have had a very extensive discussion on this already at the work session, so I don't, and we asked for comments and questions and went all through that, so I don't anticipate much discussion here. I would like to ask for a motion on the resolution. Council President.
I move to adopt the resolution number 3022.
For a second.
I second.
The motion's been moved by Council President Ockerball and seconded by Councilor Berry. I mean Dunwell, I'm sorry, this late in the evening. Is, I'd like to ask for any discussion on this? Maybe I'll just sum it up, or please, do you want to make a comment? Okay. Well, anyone, please join in, but I just wanted to summarize our discussion and the importance of this very big project, and thank our staff for working on this, you know, the way to manage and lead and execute this project, which is represented in the contract that we are discussing here. And essentially, it's representing a way to continue the safe streets, walkways, pedestrian areas, and environmentally conscious approach to developing our community. Out there in the Frog Pond area where we have the Beckman Dip, this will, as you can read on the city website, there's a lot of detail on the Beckman Road project, and it involves many different things. We discussed it at the earlier meeting, and I'm very supportive of this resolution.
I would like to make a comment and reiterate what I actually brought up in our work session. I believe as a citizen first of Wilsonville that we have a responsibility to the future of our city, and that we have a responsibility, despite the sobering facts of our economy, to continue to move forward and make sure that we are doing the right thing for all of our, all of our citizens who are living in Frog Pond and the future of Frog Pond, and in particular, paying close attention to the school, and not forgetting that this isn't just about a road. This is about building the future of our city.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more comments on top of our earlier discussion, then I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. And do we have any city manager business?
Just briefly, Mayor, I believe you all received an email from me with some questions about expectations or desires on the Japan trip, and I think we've received two responses? Two? If you have not responded to that email yet, if you could, it would be really helpful as we get the information back to our counterparts in Japan about what it is you would like, if there's anything specific you'd like to see or do while you're there, so they can plan that itinerary and then we can use that as part of our training before you go over.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know that you extended the deadline, because I was looking at your email and I thought, oh.
So much time has passed, I'm probably too late.
And if you don't, if you, if you haven't seen the email, if you'd like me to resend it, I'm happy to do that as well tomorrow.
It has been a really busy time.
Okay, I will forward the email to you tomorrow, and then I will remind you on Friday.
Thank you. And what I would like to...
Now that you're retired, Mayor, you have all this time on your hands.
Yes, my first day of retirement. I already retired from the OSU women's soccer team. Quite a while ago. But could you, would we, I assume you're going to give us some feedback on everything that you've heard, you know, from the various councilors, so that we can kind of look at that?
I'd be happy, yeah, we can aggregate all the responses and get it back to you, and that we can use that as part of our training to discuss that, too.
Okay, great, thank you. I also received a letter today from Megumi Dotte, who was representing the sort of economic development aspect of, or group in the Kitakata region, and she was thanking, you know, thanking us for the experience, or actually, the mayor of Kitakata region had written a letter, and Ms. Dotte had forwarded that to us. But the mayor was representing how the students who came to Wilsonville had such a good experience, and they were thanking us for that. And I want to thank our city staff, Erica Baylor, for making that kind of compliment Legal business.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have one item. The council was briefed in a prior work session, work session or council meeting, about the change in Oregon law regarding our public contracting thresholds. So basically, the different types of solicitations we can do at different thresholds... So basically, the different types of solicitations we can do at different thresholds. That goes into effect January 1st, 2024. Council's aware we've got a much larger public contracting project going on in legal that won't be coming up until a little bit later in the spring. So tonight, what I am asking for the council to consider is for the City of Wilsonville to adopt those state thresholds in the meantime, while we're going through this process, so that way we're consistent with what the new state law is going to be. So with that, I have some proposed motion language, unless there's a question. I'll open it up for a question. Okay. So the proposed language that I have is... Oh, was there a question?
No, it was a sneeze.
Oh, okay. The proposed language is to move to approve the public contracting solicitation thresholds stated in Senate Bill 1047 for the City of Wilsonville beginning January 1, 2024. And you can so move if you'd like.
So moved.
The motion has been made by Council President Ackerball. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by Councillor Dunwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. That's it for legal business.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And that concludes our meeting. I will adjourn our meeting at 8:02 p.m. We do have an urban renewal meeting scheduled right now. Shall we just go into it?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
I don't know.
What were they here for?
Beckman Road Corridor Project, contract.
Do we still have our camera going and everything? So I would like to call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency at 8:03 p.m., and I will ask the agency recorder to call the roll.
Member Berry.
Present.
And Member Ackerball.
Here.
Member Dunwell.
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald.
Here.
And Member Linville is excused.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion has been made by Member Ackerball and seconded by Member Berry to approve the following order of agenda. This is now our citizen input.
I think you need a vote, Mayor.
Oh. I only have so much bandwidth. Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded. Excuse me. Is there any discussion? Probably not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Is that a little more procedural? Okay. So that brings us to our citizen input. Do we have anyone wanting to testify?
Nobody in Zoom and nobody in the audience.
Then I will not read the statement that you see on the screen here. That brings us to our consent agenda. Will the agency attorney please read it?
URA Resolution Number 338, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing the city manager to execute Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Three to the Progressive Design Build Agreement for the Beckman Road Corridor Project with Tapney Sun, a joint venture, and minutes of the October 2, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion has been made by Member Ackerball and seconded by Member Dunwell to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Do we have any continuing business? Meeting is adjourned at, can't see the clock, 8:05 p.m.
Wow, that was a fast meeting.
I could have talked...